That the sort of need for more housing has been communicated to, you know, in other communities in a way that's resonated.
Thank you.
And I'm, yeah, I'm really interested to hear about the, the kinds of typologies that you like. I think the idea of townhomes were popular. You know, I've seen some of them, you know, around the city. What has been the reaction to some of those, you know, two, three-story townhomes in recent, you know, development?
From the feedback that I've received, a lot of the people are not in favor of the Metro Heights project, for say, which is the more high-end multimillion-dollar, you know, project. A lot of the residents here were not in favor, from my understanding. People from other areas were very happy to see them, and it makes them welcome to come to our city. But from what I've heard and from people that I've spoken to, townhomes and apartments, single-bedroom studios, is what I feel a lot of people need when it comes to like the younger age group. It's, that's just the feedback that I've gotten. I don't know about any of the other commissioners or chair as well.
Yeah, I, I agree. A lot of people were not in favor of that development up in the hills. But I think Commissioner LoMelli touched on a good point, that there is an opportunity to focus on maybe developing some of the multi-residential complexes throughout the areas that are already set up for with the infrastructure, bus line, or maybe, you know, eventually the, the train, to have some of these younger, you know, generation folks coming up be able to afford the, either an apartment or condominiums through those main thoroughfares. But also, the common thing from what I hear is that they also don't like to drive, which is a good thing because it presents the opportunity for encouraging that development by reducing the parking requirement. And of course, having the tenants benefit from having the, the, either the bus lines or the train nearby. And, and even recently, what I've heard is that the local students in Montebello are gonna get free tap cards, which they could use anywhere for bus or train, which is also a good way to communicate to the public that, you know, public transportation is out there, and that would remove a lot of vehicles from our roadways if more people would use, you know, public transportation more. I work in downtown LA, and a lot of people that I work with live way further beyond Montebello, and they always talk about the, the benefit of living so close to work. But for them, they, you know, that this is not a targeted city that they want to live in for various reasons. But, you know, we need to work on making our city more appealing to be able to bring in the proper development with, of course, the proper balance. And I think, like Commissioner LoMelli touched on, you know, the emphasis needs to be placed on areas that already have or will have the proper infrastructure and not, you know, move in these larger development projects in single-family zones where, you know, the effect to the people that have been living here longer, you know, would have that greater effect, especially, you know, our elderly, you know, population here in Montebello that are retired and want to have their simple, you know, way of life that they have been enjoying for a long time, and they don't want to see that change. And I certainly can understand that. So, good discussions, good, good points covered. So, appreciate the conversation. Thank you.
One thing we do, we can control as part of this project, is thinking about the design of these projects. And so, we'd love to get feedback about design that, that you like. And maybe you, you haven't seen it in Montebello, but you've seen it someplace else that you feel like could work well here, or you just think is well-designed. Because one way for people to, you know, help people accept some more density and some more housing is if it's attractive, and it also, you know, supports community needs, you know, that it has the open space that it needs, that it adds to the pedestrian vitality of the area. You know, you don't have a lot of blank walls on the street, for example, and things like that. Do you have any thoughts about design, or where you've seen design that you feel like, you know, you like and could work here?
I, I have one development that I think worked well, that condominium complex by the post office, right? And the fact that there's good businesses there for the folks that live in that area, that I think have taken advantage of the dining, the, you know, having the brewery there, you know, across the street, the businesses have benefited, benefited. The, the, the fact that people don't have to drive to drink, that's a good thing. But also, you know, the convenience of being able to just cross the street and go have, you know, a beer and dinner benefits the city with, you know, the fact that there's no traffic, but also the convenience of these folks not having to drive after consuming alcohol. That's a great opportunity. I wish there were more businesses that these people could walk to, whether it's a dry cleaners or whatever. And, and there are more businesses, you know, just further out a bit from there. But I think the mixed-use type of, you know, setup would be, I think, good for our city. More restaurants, more retail would be convenient. And again, the, the fact that people wouldn't have to drive, huge convenience, because it keeps the, the, you know, the, the way of life in our city kind of calm and simple the way most of us like it and enjoy it.
Yeah, and as you mentioned, it supports retail. So, it brings more customers, and the businesses do better, which is good.
All right, one last thing also. And one of the real important factors that we need to consider, and I know, again, going back to the, the fact that a lot of us think, okay, that's fine, but not in my backyard, is the tax dollar that stays in our city, which allows us to be able to, you know, improve our streets, improve our parks, and improve our city as a whole. All has to do with the tax revenue that our city, you know, benefits from by having these businesses in, in our backyards.
And if I'm, if I'm a chair, I, I, I don't see the question on the, on the slide or in the presentation, but I think it's, it should be asked. Would, what would be the appetite of the commission, let's say, for example, expanding the threshold for site plan review? Currently, I believe it's three units or more, or 5,000 square feet for commercial. Part of streamlining a process would be, if we're okay with design standards, and, you know, those are ultimately approved, would, would there be an appetite to expand that threshold so that it's more of an administrative function as opposed to a public hearing? So, that's something I think we should discuss, you know, openly, to see if that's something that could potentially be included. Thank you.
Good question. I like it. I like it. Yeah, for sure. It would facilitate the, the process for these types of developments in our city to be, you know, ease, more easily processed than to have this, you know, cumbersome, inexpensive, and timely process that kind of slows down everything, right?
I will say that the site plan review threshold in Montebello is quite low. So, it would definitely be consistent with many other cities if you were to raise that threshold.
And I know that, that we can't compare our city to the city of LA, but for the city of LA, it would have to be 50 units or more. So, that's a huge difference.
On, on that same vein, are there any other kind of streamlining-related ideas that you all have, based on maybe projects that you've seen that you feel like, oh, maybe that didn't need to come to us, or, you know, it could have been done maybe through the planning director over the counter?
I think it's probably a difficult thing for us as commissioners to kind of think of those things. But I think it's a, it's a good, it could be, sorry, Director, a good homework assignment for, for you and your staff to kind of, you know, brainstorm and, and propose that to come back for us to discuss and consider.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Any other last thoughts related to design that you like? Things that you want us to just make sure to include and look at as part of the project in general?
I would say for design, maybe keeping along the corridor, corridors of what we have existent with a modern touch is what I think would be best, because we also want to progress, you know, with the rest of our neighborhood cities. But at the same time, we want to keep Montebello to a little close to what, you know, made Montebello.
Do you, do you like the fact that on the main corridors, the businesses are right up at the sidewalk? It has that kind of Main Street character that's been in place for many years. You do see, you know, that eroded in some sort of strip malls here and there. But there is a pretty consistent Main Street kind of feel. Is that something that the community really likes and is proud of?
From my understanding, yes. I, I enjoy it myself, so.
So, I don't have any other specific questions at this point, but would love to hear more feedback if you have it. And certainly, we're welcome to get feedback, you know, after tonight. So, if something, if you're driving around and you see a development that you like, or something comes to mind, you can always transmit that information through the planning department, and we'll definitely, you know, take it into consideration when we're drafting the standards.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, the general public may address the planning commission on any items listed on tonight's agenda, including non-agenda items or items that are not listed in the agenda that are within the subject matter of the planning commission. Please be aware that the maximum time allotted for members of the public to speak shall not exceed three minutes per person. State law prohibits the planning commission from taking action or entering, or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda for tonight's meeting. And then, just please show courtesy to others and direct all of your comments to the chairperson. Thank you. And we do have a speaker card, Mr. Chair, from Edmund Velos. And this is related to the presentation.
Is this, is this mic working?
It's working, yes.
You know, well, let me get this done first, and then I'm gonna make a comment about this. In, you know, we had this, this meeting, I think it was on September the 15th, something like that, down in South Montebello. And I'm asking a question here. Where else in Montebello was a meeting like that held? Was there meetings like that concerning these kinds of things? Was it held anywhere else in Montebello?
So, September 15 was the first community meeting. There will be another community meeting, but the date has not been set yet.
Do you know where that one's gonna be?
Not at the moment.
So, so far, it's just South Montebello?
That was, it was held at that particular location, because that's what was available for that date.
Okay. Now, we're talking about some kind of a project here. Well, she's the one who answered me. So, why, I mean, I'm, I'm talking to her, because she answered me. I asked a question of him.
I think the presentation covered some of that information. I, we don't have the slides in front of us, but I think the dates and, and the follow-up meetings, that community meetings were that, the community meetings were covered on the, on the slide. So there are future meetings that are upcoming.
Yeah, it didn't say where, though.
No, it didn't, no.
Okay. It says here that there was going to be like 5,134 units that are supposed to be built in Montebello. Is that compulsory?
Compulsory?
Yeah, I mean, is somebody going to say either you do it or we're going to put everybody in Montebello in jail?
I think, if I may, oh, go ahead, Director.
Yes, so the 5,174 units is a, is a number that was produced by SCAG or the Southern California Association of Governments. And every city receives a number based on this methodology. Montebello, obviously, is 5,174. We don't necessarily need to build all 5,174, but we are required to provide annual reports on our progress. And we just need to accommodate for the, like, for example, in our zoning, in our housing element, we need to provide opportunity sites where we collaborate with the state. And that's how we were able to receive certification on our housing element because we did accommodate for those 5,174 units.
So you, you did say that you were going to do that?
I think if, if I could have a follow-up question to clarify the point because I think it was also covered during the presentation, but I think it's been covered before that the state does have a requirement for at least local cities to try to achieve a specific or reach a specific number of housing elements. And when that's not fully provided, there are, we have to justify, and there are penalties associated with that as well. If you can clarify that, I think that's part of the question.
Absolutely. So from what we understand is that the state is now conducting, they're monitoring cities within, you know, within the state of California. And, you know, they want to make sure that the cities are, are doing what they have committed to do, which is to provide opportunities for these units to come online.
What, what if the cities don't do it?
If, there are penalties. We could, you know, have our certification revoked by the state of California, meaning that our housing element would be non-compliant. And then at that point, we lose opportunities for grant funding. And we could also lose the ability to collect building permit revenues, among other things. And these are, these are, these are measures that have been implemented by the state that are potential penalties that, that could happen if, if cities don't follow through with their commitment.
Also, I think it was covered by the presentation slides. If you notice that there were AB and SB numbers that were developed by the state assembly that they're intended to facilitate the development of housing in each of the cities by reducing the amount of time to review and process. And if those timeframes are exceeded by a city taking longer than allowed, then those proposed developments are deemed to be approved because of the inability of a city to be able to thoroughly review those proposed developments. So this is the init, these are some of the initiatives, and staff can probably, you know, explain this better than I can, these state initiatives to facilitate the development of housing in, within the state of California because of the housing shortage.
Yes, sir. I understand that. But many people down where I live in South Montebello, we just, well, let me give you something here. You know, you talked about, well, putting certain stores if we could, but it's not there. But why not? Why aren't they there? Okay, they're not there because you give it to someone else. Something that we wanted, maybe a, a, a piece of property that could have given us like a grocery store, you say, well, we're going to give it to some industrial company. Maybe that's because they can provide more tax increment revenues. But you could rezone it and say, because, look, we have no, no, like, supermarkets in South Montebello. But why? Because you want to say, well, if that property becomes available, here comes some special interest, we'll put them there. And that happened. And it's happened all over Montebello. Look, we've seen it with Telukoo. That was one, Jesus. We gave them how many millions of dollars? And they, they operate their place for free and they pay us $1 a year for that. And we gave them just the one on, on, on Whittier Boulevard, over $17 million. We gave them that. And then we got this other one on, on Whittier and, and, and Montebello Boulevard. There used to be a Ralph's store there and everybody used it, loved it. But no, we had to have Telukoo there. And it's, we, so we don't have any supermarkets now in South Montebello. We got to go, come way up to North Montebello to get, get to one. But that's, that's not just it. I mean, we, every opportunity we have to do something better for our city in South Montebello, no, you want to give it to some special interest. And then you kind of put it on us that, hey, we're the ones who are resisting. Why wouldn't we? Why wouldn't we resist? Why wouldn't anybody? Because we want something and you won't give it to us? And now you're saying, well, here, we're going to give you something that you don't want and we, and certainly we don't want this. And, and you're asking, well, why are you so resistant to this? And, you know, we've been burned so many times. Look, back in May, this, of this year, I handed over to the city council a petition with, with 1,239 names on it, signatures. About 45 of them were businesses all on Washington Boulevard against that light rail train that you're saying is coming. You know, you, we certainly have the amount of people who are the majority in this matter to stop that project. To have you people come on our side, the people you're supposed to represent, and say, we're going to take a side against the metro because our people who live in this city don't want it. No, instead you ignore us. Instead, you turn your back on us. You don't acknowledge us at all. And we know this thing's going to be bad because you wouldn't tell us about it. We know it's going to be bad because you didn't want to have any meetings down in South Montebello to tell people what was coming. And it isn't just here. That was in Pico Rivera. That was in Whittier. That was in Santa Fe Springs. None of the people down there around Washington Boulevard knew about it. You're going to know. So here, you're, you're taking for granted that we're just supposed to roll over and let you run over us. You guys are living in these fantasies that everybody loves what you guys are doing. This is, this is what I call, how would I say? You, you want to go through this diplomatic white-collar criminality. This is, these are millions and millions and millions of dollars that should be coming to the people. Instead, you're saying, no, 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 we have all these special interests. We have the Quiet Cannon here. We have all kinds of other, now we're going to have Top Golf. All of these wonderful things. And where, where are we as, as people when we say we don't want them?
Sir, I think you exceeded your time, but you have made really good, valid points, really important points. So I, I personally do appreciate you being, first of all, involved in your community. And obviously, you care and that's why you're here. And the fact that the first community meeting in regards to just exploring options for development in our city was in the South Side, I think, you know, that's indicative of the fact that, you know, they want to take your opinion, your consideration, your input on anything that is to come to our city in the future, you know, to be available for you to communicate this back to our city. The, this body, the planning commission, is not a deciding, you know, body when it comes to the overall, you know, process of how things are, are run in the city. Our ability to, you know, vote and process development is limited. But I think some of this information you have communicated to us tonight is very relevant and very important. And I think it needs to continue with our city council. And I agree with a lot of, I don't know about a lot of the stuff that you've said. I, you know, that's probably me that just don't know a lot of what you discussed. But it's certainly something that needs to be discussed and, and explored. And you need or should receive some answers to some of the issues that you've raised. So I commend you for it. And I think it's good that you and some of your, you know, neighbor, neighbors are here to bring, bring up these issues. But that's literally what we covered in the, during the presentation, that we need community input to bring the proper business, the proper development, you know, in your community. And in order for us to be able to do that, we need you at the table. We don't want to just come and tell you, this is what you're going to get. You need to be at the table with the proper amount of input and see what benefits you as a, you know, community member. So I thank you, sir, for your comments tonight.
Well, let me just say something. You have this woman here from ICOM, okay, ACOM. Now, they're the ones who are doing the same thing. They were doing the environmental impact report concerning this metro line. And they say they want to hear from us. But they keep, and overwhelmingly, people have been against this project. They don't want to hear from us. They just keep on going like they didn't hear us.
Well, we, we.
And, and we presented this to them. They know about it. And you can find that, if you don't know about those petitions, it's, I, I gave it to, to the city council. You should know about it.
Sure. I, I don't know that I can do anything about that or that this, you know, commission can do anything about that. But, you know, we will certainly ask our director to communicate this back to the city manager and report to the city council that, you know, you have.
You can do something about it and you can do it tonight if you want to. All of you can say, we are against the metro rail because the majority of our people in our city that we've heard from are against it. We stand with them rather than with, with the Metropolitan Transportation Authority. You can do that. If you're, if you want to do something about it, that's what you can do. Because we presented it to you. We did it in good faith. We want you to know how we feel.
We don't have the ability, sir, and me personally. I don't know if the other commissioners want to say anything about this, but we don't have enough information tonight to make or take a position on any of that. So I will not, and I apologize for that. But that's probably all we can have you say tonight. But thank you for your time, sir.
I think you can say something. I think you can all just say, okay, I stand with you. And even if it's just for you to say it, not as a body, each one of you could say it because these are your people. These are the people you're representing here tonight. You know, and, and we're going to have an election. Now, those people ask to represent us. They aren't. They aren't. We've given them plenty of time to come out and say, okay, we've got, we've got a problem here in South Montebello and it's moving northward because we are coming north.
Commissioner Cuevas, this is the city attorney's office speaking. We are now going into subject, subject matter that's not within the body of, of tonight's meeting.
You're too close. I can't, you're, you're garbled.
This is beyond.
This is directed towards the chair, chairperson.
Sir, we're discussing something that we have no authority, power, or the ability to discuss during this meeting, but thank you for your comments.
And if I, if I can, Mr. Chair, I, I, I mean, I will make a commitment. Mr. Velos, I, you know, we want to, I, from what I hear, there's a little bit of a trust disconnect and we want to obviously rebuild that trust. So if you want to meet, you let us know. Our staff is available. Anytime, we will come to you or you can come to us. However, we, we will, we will continue this discussion between staff and hopefully we can come up with some solutions. If I may, Mr. Chair, I will just add, we recently did hire an economic development manager. And I know that the goal from, you know, the city manager council and all representatives is that we want a one Montebello, not a south or a north. It's one Montebello. And I know that's the, the, the goal for us as a staff and we're working towards that. So that's my commitment, so thank you.
Well, that may be, but that's not the way it's going. And, and look.
Okay, sir, we, you know.
I know that I've overdone my, my stay here. I know that. But look, these are urgent matters. And we're looking at our neighborhoods deteriorating from, from not crime so much. Yeah, that's there. But the, but we're getting this, this idea, well, you know, we can run over these people and, and make them take whatever we want to have here, which is going to bring us money. But we're not, we're not realizing that.
Sir, we, we want a better Montebello and I think we've covered all, you know, options that we have. And we appreciate your passion and, you know, we encourage you to continue that effort with your friends and neighbors and with the, you know, deciding body like the city council and the city manager that can take action on this matter, not the planning commissioner.
Let me just give you one last example.
But it's got to be quick, sir, because we got to, we got to move on.
Last year, we had that 301 Jack Mar. Remember those condos they wanted to build there? You guys came out against that. Same kind of deal. You guys came out and voted against that. I'm asking for the same thing about the metro rail. It may not be on your agenda, but it is on everybody's agenda. This is a big thing. Three point, at least over $3 billion involved in this.
You got to lobby, present, discuss this with the body that has the decision-making ability for that. We don't, sir, but thank you. Okay, we're moving on, sir. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is staff communication.
There are no staff communications.
Regarding what, we need a, a card for?
Commissioner, if I may, it is really up to your discretion whether you would permit her to speak. She would have a three-minute limit.
We're running behind, but what is it that you want to talk about? The presentation? Okay, but it, we're going to give you a time limit because we got to move on to the next item. Very quick. Thank you.
I was at the initial meeting at Hallifield Park and there was only, I'm sorry.
State your name for the record and.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me take this off. My name's Catrice Ortiz. I was at the initial meeting in Hallifield Park and I live in that community. There was very few people there. And there's very few people there because nobody knew about it. I found out the date of just by word of mouth. And I understand that you post stuff on your website, but people don't go to your website all the time or every day. So maybe if you can do a mailer, maybe if you can do a mailer or something to inform the community a little bit better, I think you'd have more people here tonight and you would have more people in the planning and they would get more information that they need. Also, I'd like to say that you guys have an extremely important job because you create the blueprint that gets presented to the residents and city council for the future of Montebello. And I was involved in, I don't know, a year ago or whenever, they were doing the general plan and they had this independent body come and talk about the vision of the city. And I think the vision of the city is not congestion and all those things that we do not want. I know you don't, we all want one Montebello. But in South Side, it feels like all the congestion, all the multi-dwelling buildings are there. And also with the, now, the people building the little second homes out of their garage, it's creating even more congestion in the small area. So when you ask about more housing, they're going to reject it because there's so much there already. I don't know if anybody lives in that area or driven through there. It is ridiculous. And parking is a tiny, tiny, tiny part of it. So I would hope that your next meeting or whatever you're going to do, you really involve the residents and not focus on one particular area of the city. We, we're not against making the community better or having more housing or against renters or anything like that. I think that the residents, one, need information and need to feel that one area is not going to be targeted in the future.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Thank you. So ending that discussion, I think it's, one last comment regarding that. It's imperative that we continue the community outreach and provide, you know, as much information as we can because it sounds like they feel that they're being targeted for that kind of development only in that area of the city, which I don't think that's the case. I, and, and sometimes we focus our, our attention to what we see in our backyard and, you know, don't see what else is happening elsewhere. But, you know, it's imperative that, again, we continue that constant communication with our community members. So thank you. Okay, moving on to the public hearing section of our agenda, item number two.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Chair, item two on tonight's agenda is a site plan review request, and this relates to the property at 1617 South Greenwood Avenue. I believe Stacy Morales will provide a presentation on this item. And then we will open the public hearing, thank you.
Can you see the PowerPoint, I'm sorry? Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commissioners, my name is Stacy Morales, Associate Planner. And this evening, I will be presenting case number PC 2022-0005 SPR for a site plan review application, which will allow Ms. Rachel Hee Choi on behalf of the property owner A&amp;J Realty LLC to construct a 13,825 square foot warehouse and office building at site 1617 South Greenwood Avenue. The entitlements associated with this project include the approval of a site plan review with conditions to allow the construction of a 13,825 square foot warehouse and office building. On February 25th, 2022, the applicant filed a site plan review application with City Staff. And on February 15th, 2022, Staff issued a deemed complete letter. The aerial map before you delineates the subject parcel in red and is 37,300 square feet in area. The project site is located approximately 830 feet from the intersection of Telegraph Road and South Greenwood Avenue. The subject property has been utilized as a truckyard and dispatch office and is currently vacant with no active business licenses on file. The subject site is zoned M2 for heavy manufacturing. The zoning map before you illustrates that the project site is situated adjacent to mostly other industrial uses, which should allow the use to be appropriately integrated without posing significant impacts on the surrounding land uses and the community. The project site is surrounded by industrial zone properties to the north, south, east, and west. The immediate surrounding land uses are designated heavy manufacturing, which is compatible with this project site's general plan designation of industrial. Further, it is not anticipated that the project will have an adverse impact on adjacent or abutting properties. The slide before you illustrates the applicant's proposed site plan for the project. The proposed warehouse and office building is located north with its vehicular access directly accessible from South Greenwood Avenue. The proposed site plan review would allow for the construction of a 13,825 square foot warehouse and office and establish mandatory conditions which the project must abide by. The scope of work for the project includes a proposed driveway apron measuring 39 feet and 5 inches in width, the installation of a total of 3,737 square feet of landscaping, as well as provide a total of 80 parking spaces, which include a minimum of four truck loading spaces. Lastly, the project site will share a common driveway with adjacent property and shall therefore submit an application for a lot tie to hold the two contiguous parcels as one and shall be approved prior to the issuance of building permits. The site plan review application is considered a project per the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA definition. The project is considered a Class 32 and categorically exempt per Section 15332 Infill Development Projects. On October 20th, 2022, the public hearing notice was mailed to owners within 300-foot radius from the exterior boundaries of the subject property. And on October 20th, the public hearing notice was published in the Daily Journal with your daily news. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 1422 approving the site plan review case number PC 2022-0005 SPR with conditions and is categorically exempt per Section 15332 Class 32 Infill Development Projects. Thank you, and this concludes my presentation. And I am available for any questions or comments, and as is the project representative.
Thank you, any questions for staff? Thank you. Can we have the owner's rep come up if you wish to? No? We'll open the public hearing. Do we have the owner's rep or the applicant's rep wishing to speak or address the Planning Commission? You don't need to if you don't want to, it's fine. Okay, all right. Do we have speaker cards for this item?
Mr. Chair, we do have one speaker card, and it is from Edmund Velos, so-
Please come up, Mr. Velos.
Hello, Edmund Velos, again, South Montebello. I really have nothing against this project, except you see a piece of property, it's there, set aside. And she's going to use it, I have no problem with that. But there was, at some point, if there's good planning going on, you say, hey, we'll set that property aside and just leave it vacant until something else comes. We could put together, and we could put maybe grocers' warehouse, grocers' outlet there for, and it's down there, and it won't hurt anybody else, and we'll get, we'll have a store. Or we could have something else there that would benefit the community. I have no problem with it because this is what's going to happen, we know that. But we have, when we have these opportunities, this is what I'm talking about. Piece of land becomes vacant, or, you know, we could use something like that. It goes to, for an industrial use, it doesn't go for residential use. And it always turns out that way. And then, when we get angry and we don't want what you're going to put on us, it's like you're putting it on us that we're standing in the way. When we wanted to welcome things like this, you won't give it to us. Then when you want to bring something in and we get angry about it, oh, well, now, we got a little, we got some obstinance down in South Montebello. Ma'am, I have nothing against your project. It's all right with me now, there's nothing else, they're not going to do anything with. But when we have something, this is our cautionary tale, that we always get this kind of thing. When a piece of property comes available, bring it to us, why don't we get that? Instead of saying, oh, we're gonna put housing there. Even though you don't want it, we're gonna put that there. We're gonna give you something you don't want. And then when there's something there we could use, doesn't come to us. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Velos. And maybe, you know, his comment is something that we can discuss, that, you know, the city works towards encouraging some type of development. And I can understand the comment about the supermarkets and the need for them to have a supermarket so that, you know, they don't have to come north of the tracks or Pico for shopping. But some locations, I personally don't think this location is ideal for a supermarket. I wouldn't want my kid to go, you know, walk to the store to go get groceries in the middle of trucking industrial-type area. But I think this is part of the objective in effectively communicating with our community members that maybe a supermarket would be more idealistic or a more idealistic location for a supermarket would be in an area that's closer to residential development and not in the middle of an industrial-type setting. But point taken, I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but good point, thank you. We're closing the public hearing, and any internal discussion by our Commission staff? No? Okay, if there's no further comments or communication discussions, can we entertain a motion to approve or disapprove this request?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1422, approving case number PC 2021-0005-SPR with conditions to allow the construction of the 13,825 square foot warehouse and building at the project site.
Do we have a second? Do you want us to say that the state-
So we have a motion that was introduced by Commissioner Lamelli and seconded by Vice Chair Del Rio. So that is on the floor to approve item two, and I will go ahead and take the roll call.
Thank you.
Chair Cuevas?
Aye.
Vice Chair Del Rio? I will take that as an aye. Commissioner Lamelli?
Aye.
And that is approved, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Choi. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Planning Commission Orals.
I would just like to put it out there that I, you know, I took in the one resident that decided, two residents that decided to show up and speak up for more, I'm sure there's more people that feel the same way as he does, that maybe we can consider for any new projects that we might be taking into consideration. Maybe we can rezone some of the spaces near the residential areas so that we can go ahead and provide for the community what it is they want, which is a supermarket.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I think, you know, unfortunately, Mr. Velos has left, but our staff is committed, actually, and I know our Economic Development Manager is excited about the opportunity. And I think there is only good things to come for, you know, I mean, for the area there in Montebello. I will say this, a few months ago, we did take a moratorium to City Council because we did have a proposal for a tilt-up warehouse on Washington Boulevard, which was, you know, gonna basically, you know, take a vacant lot that could be used for other things and basically put up a tilt-up warehouse right in the area where I think Mr. Velos actually lives, which is on Washington just west of Bluff Road. And we were committed to not allowing that to happen. And we did go to council with the moratorium, and council ultimately approved it, which deterred this applicant from moving forward. And now that lot is being, you know, preserved for future development. And I think our general plan will reveal, we've identified the corridor as a catalytic corridor for opportunity sites, for mixed-use development and things, I think, that would be conducive to a future supermarket and to future retail that would, you know, complement what I think is the vision for the corridor. So we're excited, it takes time, and I know that, you know, there's some frustrations, and I hear it. But rest assured that we also hear it as staff, and we are working towards addressing those concerns. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you very much. I've been working for the team for a few years now, and I'm just very excited for all the changes, very excited for everybody that's here now. I do see that people who are here, they do care about Montebello, and we do care about our residents, and we do care about bettering Montebello for the better, so thank you.
Thank you, that's actually very, you know, useful and beneficial information that could have alleviated some of the frustration by Mr. Velos that could have, you know, helped walk away from this place, maybe with a little warmer heart or more comfort or a bigger smile.
Absolutely, I will say, we will reach out, and I will invite Mr. Velos for coffee and Ms., I think, Ochoa is here, Ortiz. And I think we want to engage the community, we want them to know us, and we want to know them. I think that's super important, communication is key in any relationship, so absolutely, we're committed to that.
That's good, thank you, we appreciate that. Because even the community outreach that took place down there was perceived as something underhanded or hiding or, you know, with an objective to hurt them. And, you know, it was totally opposite. It was, you know, to gather information, to, you know, bring in feedback, to share some of the, you know, work that's being done. And unfortunately, the mistrust of, you know, government, I think, you know, kind of has continued to be a big factor for folks that are just not trusting of the, you know, local government in looking out for their best interest. And having some background information as far as what, you know, is to be done ahead and having their voice heard and the fact that, you know, these plans, hopefully, could, you know, eventually benefit the community in the area and the residents would be, you know, really good to be able to somehow, through this, you know, hopefully, if people are listening to the Planning Commission meeting today, will be able to hear some of this information that has been in mind with the current administration and the objective to, again, improve the area. And it's not to hurt them at all, it's, you know, we literally talked about having that balance between single-family and transitioning to multifamily and then eventually to commercial development. And I think Ms. Lamelli covered it, in the areas that have the infrastructure is probably where we want to see the more intense type of uses and not just, you know, manipulate the process to hurt the single-family dwelling type of, you know, housing that's out there. It's to provide them with as much benefit as we can. But, you know, unfortunately, the investment and the people who own these properties are not the city. And, you know, the city does its best to be able to provide and facilitate that balance, but we're not able to always achieve that objective and, you know, but it's always perceived as a mistrust that someone is lining their pockets. I'm sure it's not anybody in the city that works with the city, but, you know, it'll always be perceived that way. But, okay, well, great conversation. Mr. Del Rio, anything else? I know you have a limited ability to speak tonight with your voice. She can't speak, okay, let the record reflect that. Okay. Thank you, all right, if there's nothing else, I guess we can adjourn this meeting. Thank you for your time, everyone.